You go first for the first day, just tell me when you want in slide.
No problem. Hello.
Can I give you control of some?
Coming up here?
Over.
Hello, everybody.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Engineering Wednesday of Stem Inspiration Week. Today, we've got Houghshock County Council with us with Karis Theodou and Alexo Mambusi here to talk about engineering is all around you and they'll be providing insights into the day-to-day work within the ACC WSP and where engineering path there can lead. Just to let you know that we're recording this session, please keep your videos shut and your mics closed as well, just to avoid distractions. Ask any questions in the chat, the chat will be motivated. So I'm now gonna pass it over to our host. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Hello, everybody. Today, my colleague, Harris, we're going to sort of give you insight on the day-to-day life of an engineer working for WSP under the Hartfordshire County Council contract. Harris works as an engineer in the development management side of the council. Then I work in the pavement section of the council. And throughout the presentation, we'll be showing you examples of the work we do, how we do it, any challenges and the rewards as well. So if you've got any questions, feel free to pop in in the in the chat and we can do our best to answer them. Harris, for the next slide. Okay. So, okay, so what do we do? So WSP is a Canadian company which is based everywhere in the world. We've got companies in the in America, companies in the in Europe, and some companies in the United Kingdom. And we do major works in and under the Hartfordshire contract, we do the highway works. So every single time when you see a logo of roadworks, normally it's us, we'll be doing the works on you. You also deal with technical engineering. We also deal with dam water engineering, basically building dams and pipelines and everything. So but what you're gonna do today will be talking mainly on highway engineering, which myself and Harris will be explaining about. So under the contract, this, I think these have been major works we do, we do what you call structure engineering is basically managing bridges within Hartfordshire County Council. We have what you call the electric management team, which basically does make sure all the roads are closed safely on time, they don't cause congestion issues. And if you see some advanced notice boards, normally that's the team which normally does it, then normally the car present anyway. And the electrical engineering team deals with the traffic signals. I'm sure you've seen them throughout the council anyway. So it's a big, big, big team which does everything. So it's just a snapshot of what we do. So I'm just gonna explain briefly on how I managed to come to where I am now. So I finished my studies, university studies in 2016 in London. Then I joined WSP in 2016. Then throughout my training, I've been training, it's similar like what like what you'd be the hope that you're getting at school, but it's now like you're doing the real job. And I've been working on different projects and I got promoted to assisting in 2018. And in 2020, we know, so I'm still waking my way up to see if I can get promoted, hopefully I will. But it's very, very interesting period of time. You learn a lot, you meet new friends. When I came, I didn't have a friend, but as you can see, I've got my friend Iris now. And there's many, many, many benefits of what you get when you're working from the graduate up to.
It's always good, as Alexio said, we met on the first day deduction day. And it's always good if you have someone that would go the same trip along with you, because you push and you pull one another to reach your goals. So at the same time, we have registered on the same institutions for civil engineers. We are attending trainings, the same way we are doing STEM. It's always, it's easier to keep up on things if you have someone that can pull you or push you with them.
Absolutely. Thanks, Harry. So unfortunately, because of the current situation that we have COVID-19, prior to COVID-19, a day-to-day work, you come in the morning, it's jovial as usual, you have a meeting around 10 o'clock, I don't know about Harris, whatever, you normally have your meetings on, it's nine o'clock, isn't it? Depends. Then around, you have like a lunch break, one o'clock, you go to size, if it's not raining, of course, and the weather's nice, not too cold. Then around five, you normally go home. But this was the life that we used to have before the the COVID-19. And as you can see now, I think you can see myself and Iris, you're working from home now. This is the current life that we have. So we have the laptop, you know, we are still the same kind of work we are doing, but just means we just have to draw with virtual now. We have to still, we still go to set only if safe. I don't know if you go anything else to add, Harris?
No, basically, what I wanted to say that if you're an engineer, it's really important to have the ability for adaptation. And suddenly, when COVID was officially a problem officially in UK, I remember it was 23rd of March, we have already gone through six months, it's half a year already. So on the 23rd of March, suddenly, the company announced everyone should work from home. And on the same day, they gave us the the access to MS Teams and they told us that now we'll be doing all the the teams or assessments through virtual meetings on MS Teams and all other platforms like Zoom. And suddenly, you can see how quickly the whole organization organization will adapt, because mainly all the health and safety assessments had to change to adapt with COVID-19. The first few weeks, because things were awkward, we avoided going on site or any other outside of home activities. So after that, we have to fill special forms, we have to have our masks or special PPE, the personal protecting equipment when going outside. So again, what I want to say is adaptation is really important. It's not only for engineers, it's as human beings, but as you can see also for you teachers or the students, suddenly, one day, you have to stay home, you have to create your own program, you have to realize that you're still a professional or a student, you have to have a program and not relax or get, I don't know, avoid doing your your tasks, because then the pile of things that you need to do is increasing. So, okay, so now we have a bit of, let's say, brainstorming to show you how engineering or highway works are around us and how well we see it, or sometimes we don't realize what we are seeing every day, and we don't really know what it means, or if it does what's the difference. So for example, here, I know that, again, unfortunately, COVID is all over the news, but we need to to say. So basically, now, we have witness reducing of a low volume of traffic from cars or mopeds or motorbikes. So mainly now, we can, we have seen increases on pedestrians and cyclists. So when you cycle on a footway, you can, if the footway is a shared footway, you can see one or the other signs. These signs look similar, but it's important to understand what's the difference. And we have to understand also that we have to respect one another, all the road users, we need to understand our responsibilities and our rights on the highway network. So for example, if you see the left side sign on a footway or in any other area, it doesn't need to be highway, it might be your town center, which is not highway. So what that means, this means that this area is a shared footway and cycleway area. So it's a mixed use. So both a group of road users can be on that surface at the same time. So we need to be careful and we need to know what to do when we we face this sign. And on the other side, on the right-hand side, we can see that we have a segregation line here, which denotes that pedestrians go to the right and the cyclists go to the left. It's really important to understand that when you go inside, the same way, you need to realize that if you go to a crossing and drop crossing and you see tactile paving, the buff color paving, you need to understand that that denotes that the priorities with the cars. So the pedestrian or the cyclist has to stop and give way.
Okay. Thanks, Harris. I don't know if any of you recognize, but this is a place for one of our schemes that we delivered in Watford. And it's part of part of the day-to-day work that we do, myself and Iris, we have to make sure the assets, we call them assets, what Hartfordshire assets and good work in order. And as you can see, this is one of the quality portal. Basically, the road is failing, as you can see, and part of our job is making sure that we do our necessary, that's why you see a lovely yellow color on your on the on the footway. I know people call it a pavement on the footway around there. That's where we do our tests to make sure the road is done. So all the work that we do, whenever you see some work speed done, we have to do some necessary tests, we have to check whether that is correct, because obviously, we don't want to do something, it doesn't last for a long time. So it's just a bit of a snapshot of what we do. It's part of our daily, daily basis of work.
You can show them a bigger similar problem.
Yeah, this is a lovely scheme that we did in 2016. It was one of my first projects when I came in. I think one of the famous thing, which happened in St Albans. So basically, what it is, only lovely, I think it's around March time or December time, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there was a big massive sinkhole in the carriageway. And as you can see, people couldn't get out to do their work, you know, there's no access throughout the road. So one of my my first jobs was to design it. And it was a very, very interesting project. And as you can see now, how it looks lovely now on the picture on your right.
And you, sorry to interrupt, you can see how Alexa's job was, because you see the size of the car here. And if you compare it to the sinkhole, you can, and here you can see some utilities. So you understand that you might have drainage, water cuts, utility, energy cuts. So especially now that everyone has his iPhone and their smartphones, we can't last for a day. So you understand how big of a pressure this is for Alexa's team to deliver and then to grow.
Yeah. So it's one of those jobs that we do. And if you join, if you join us, if you join WSP in Hartfordshire, you work on one of those many, many projects. And not only do you get to actually enjoy doing the job yourself, you know, you get recognized. I think we were actually part of the Channel Five team, which got channeled to see on news. So it was quite nice for us to be, you know, to be seen on the news, been many celebrities, seen all the good work that we've done. So it's one of the many, many, one of the good things that you can come, you can enjoy if you come and join us at WSP. And I'll let Harris show you more of the nice project that we work on.
Yes. So this is a project I was and I'm still involved with. The scheme started back in 20, late 2017, 2018. I don't know if we have any students with us coming from this school, this new school is a Catholic, the Catholic Winter School is in Harpenden, is between Common Lane and Lower Luton Road in Harpenden. As you can see, when we got the scheme, we only had a greenfield, not much infrastructure, just the B653 road and the Common Lane road here. And the main, the main goal of, so in this scheme, the separation is that of the greenfield, the developer, with an agreement with the DFE Department for Education, they had to build the school. But for the school to be operational, the fee for purpose, we had to upgrade and provide highway assets that would mainly consider the local transport planning for, which is access for cyclists and pedestrians to the school. Because what the aim is usually for the local government is to have schools that local students will go to it. We know that sometimes the school might have a reputation that is really good and kids from other councils might come or other towns. But when they design it mainly, they're trying to reduce the number of cars or other vehicles going to the school. And we are mainly, so the priority is cyclists, pedestrians, then we go to public transport and then private cars. So that's how the area was when we got the scheme. So as you can see here, a lot have changed. This is the progress of the internal side of the school. As you can see here, there is a loop. This is a provision for the oncoming highway works. So basically, there will be an access here and an access here, it will be an in and out system that the buses or the coaches will be able to drop off the kids inside the school and then leave, instead of waiting on the carriageway and creating a chaos. We all have been there, we all have been through dropping or picking up time from school and we know that usually is the case. So you can see that now, we, most of the works, they have been completed. You can see that now we have provided a new bus layby there on the bus stops, we have a new shelter. You can see that the previous, if I go back, before here, there was only a normal footway, about a meter point two footway that was going along the backment. And now, we have a wider shared footway cycleway, as you can see here, I don't know if it's clear, but you can still see the blue sign on the top left, which this is a shared footway cycleway with no segregation. And as I was saying before, these are the tactile pavings, which denote that when you come here, the priority is with the drivers. This also, the reason of this pathing, tactile paving, is to help our impaired or blind local users to realize where they are, how they can cross. So it's really important. People might not consider these things important, but imagine that you cannot see, and you have to rely on something with the ground to be able to cross the road. So this is designed based on the human sides and how people react with their stick, or how people react when they are impaired. So everything you see on highways is important. We, we know that usually highway is a, is a source for issues and complaints. But unfortunately, we are members of the public too, and we know that we have to push our local government to improve the highway assets as much as possible. Here, you can see that it's not clear here, but we have a two-can crossing as well. So here, we have a crossing. When we say two-can crossing, is this one here. So when you say two-can crossing, it's one word, but if you split it, you can understand the the root of the word. So it says two-can crossings. So two can cross on the same time. So that means pedestrians and cyclists can use this crossing at the same time. So the programming of the software, so you can see now where the electrical engineers are required. So the programming and the timing of this crossing is based on years and years of research, just how much time people need to cross the road. It depends on the width of the road, how busy the road is, and the volume of the traffic. Okay.
Yeah.
So as Alexio was saying.
Thanks, Harry. So why should you join us? I think you should, one of the benefits of joining us, I would say, one of the best benefits was meeting new friends. When I joined, I think as Iris explained earlier, I didn't, I didn't know anyone, but I met Harris on the first day of training. I think it was four years ago, right, Harris?
Yes.
And we've just been friends, not only in work, but off work, you know, you still can meet us at work, you know, watch football sometimes, you know, it's one of the many benefits. And you also work in excellent projects. Our work is not just based in the office, you just just going to work in the office, you meet new people, you know, it's a variety of work, go on site. Unfortunately, because of the current pandemic, we have to sort of be careful when, when and when you go on site. But it's a variety of work, it's not just based on one thing. And also, if you can pursue further, it's a very good starting salary for graduates. So it's an excellent career path, you know, the plan of rewarding, rewarding things for to come. And you always push you to the limit, you know, there's always room for you to grow, you know. And if you're, and if you're interested in one thing, you can do another thing. As Harris explained, we are engineers, but we actually work in different departments. So there's always room to grow, you know. So I don't know if you could anything more.
And I wanted to raise as well, wanted to raise something, we're raising on every STEM presentation, we are doing that, engineering is not only for men. There is huge diversity. World has progressed a lot. So as you can see here, being an engineer, a civil engineer is not only wearing the PPE and going on site, it's a combination of two. So here, you can see a networking event with colleagues. And also, you can be in the office doing your design, calculating the road, the curb lines, the volumes and everything. And then the next day, you say, okay, I had enough, I need to change scenery and see something else. So let me go and inspect the work we are doing in Watford all over Hartfordshire. Okay. So it's important to understand diversity is changing. WSP, one of the companies that they have a huge diversity, I mean, my team is about 17 members now. So we have eight female colleagues and nine male colleagues. You understand that it's a balance, which is really important.
So how can you join us? Is it career? There's two career pathways, you can join us. Either you can join us, like what you've done, myself and Iris, we went to university, we did a degree in civil engineering, and we admitted as graduates. And, you know, we had to work our way up to where we are. So once you get as a graduate, this guy's the limit. You can do what you want, you know, you can join a team, you can go to different projects and and you work your way up until you're professionally qualified, either to be a chartered engineer or either incorporated engineer, which myself and Iris are working on. And hopefully, by the time next year, we should be professionally qualified. The other route that we have is once you finish your studies, where you are, once you finish your sixth form, you can come and join us at WSP under what we call the degree apprenticeship whereby you work four days a week with us, we'll be training you, and you get a day to go to study at university. WSP will pay your tuition fee towards your studies and they'll pay you the, they reimburse your cost towards your travel, your travel to and from investing. So the the good thing about this is you'll be studying, getting a degree, at the same time, you're getting experience. So some of our undergraduate trainees, they've joined us and they'll be, I think, by the end of their training agreement, which would be around three, a year, four, five, they'll be professionally qualified, is incorporated engineer, if they have been a bachelor's degree. Or if you want to challenge yourself, you do a master's degree, you can actually be a chartered engineer. So the I would suggest for most of our apprentices who are coming in, they are just coming from, from college or from school where you are now, you can come and join us. You just, I think the main side that we study is maths, computer science and science. You come as you meet a good trainees, like myself, you know, I think Iris is mentoring a couple of students in your team. I mean, I'm also mentoring some students. So you meet a variety of, I mean, of people who are willing to train you. You know, if you've got any questions to do with your coursework, you don't just deal with your work. The work that we do can also help you, you know, with your mentoring towards your, your studies from day-to-day studies. So I don't know if you've got anything else, Aries?
What I wanted to say is, while you're at school, take any opportunity, because school actually is, so when you're in school and someone says civil engineer, you have a different perspective of what it is until you go to college. And then when you go to college, you realize that's different. Then you go to the professional world and you realize it's different. So what I mean is, every opportunity you have to do apprentices or a summer placement, which we had a lot, I had the luck and experience to be mentoring, as Alexio said, few students, some of them, they were colleagues, kids that they applied on ACC to be placed there for the summer and do a rotation throughout the Hartfordshire County Council, let's see how everything works. So they work with the legal team, they work with finance, they work with the highways team, the structures team. So you can realize, if you have an idea of what you want to do later, and you go there to have a clear idea of what it is as well, because you might realize, ah, this is not really for me, but I've seen something else that is more suitable for me. So it's always good to test yourself, let's say, during your school time and to see what you actually like to do. And as Alexio said, WSP, they have their own programs that you can apply through WSP website and be placed as either as a graduate or do apprentice while you do your college. Here are the subjects that you need to have to fulfill their criteria for their apprentice program. So you, the important subjects are maths, physics, the useful ones are computing, ICT, designer technology, IFT, geography, languages can also be an advantage, because we have a lot of offices all over the world. And sometimes there are opportunities for temporary placements or experience, or we have colleagues that suddenly they said, oh, there is a nice placement in Australia, I have some family members in Australia. So why not go in there for a year, I can see my family, because it's not normal to be going back and forth to Australia, it's really far. So in general, you need five GCSEs, level five or above, including English, maths, science and technology, and a minimum level six a month for further maths. Any questions?
So. We have a few questions. So about the sinkhole, how many different careers would have worked on that project?
That's a good question. I don't, Harris, if you don't mind to go back to the to the slide with the sinkhole. Yeah, that's a good question. So as you can see, the sinkhole itself, there's so many teams which are involved. Just to give you a summary, we have what you call the design team. So the design team is made up of, I think, about six teams. And myself and I is part of the six major teams which are embedded into the team. So it would be the, the team which I work in, the pavement design or the carriageway design, and what you call the highway communications team, which basically do all the communications, make sure all residents are fully aware of what's going on. So whenever you see some litter drops coming into the into the houses, they are our communications team, they make sure they work with the highway design maintenance team to make sure all the residents are fully fed with what you're doing, when you're gonna do it. And sometimes, I don't know if you can see the cabs on the other footway, we have to check with Harris's team sometimes, because we can't just put for this section, because they were damaged, and some of the residents wanted to put more cabs than they were not before. So we had to check with Harris's team to check whether, if we can, if we are allowed to put more cabs or not. Also, there's some pipes, which you can see are damaged. So we have to work other, what you call utilities, like sky utilities, gas companies, water bodies. So there's so many teams which you work with, just to make sure the scheme so gets done. But the way we're working, we don't work as a team, individual teams with what you call whole client service. So it's a bunch, we deliver the work as a one team, just how we call it, we make sure the work is coordinated well to make us deliver successfully. Just how we call it, we make sure the work is coordinated well to make us deliver successfully. I don't know if that answered your question.
Another question we've got, potholes. Big, big political problem at the moment, lots of people hate a pothole. At what point do you say, or actually, how do you decide we're not going to fill the pothole, we're going to resurface?
Okay, so so just to make sure I answer your question correctly. Did you say, how do we design, how are we going to fill the material, is that correct?
Yeah, so so obviously you've got, you've got competing arguments. Yes, well done there, Harris.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
At what point did it go from, were we feeling, we're just gonna repair the road surface here?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. So the way we work is, in Hartfordshire, we have what we call the, as you can appreciate, the work that we do is public funded. The amount that we do for our work is public funded. I think Iris is sort of a bit different, but the majority of the work that we do is public funded. So we have a budget that we work with, pay every single year to deliver the works, which we call the financial year. So we have another team, which we call the asset management team. Their job is purely is to identify all the assets in the network, which needs to, which needs work to get done. So one of the, so this road was picked up as one of the sections. The way it gets picked up, sometimes a member of public, member of publics can actually take a photo. They can send it on our website and you can have a look into it and you see if how we, if we can fix it. It depends on how bad it is. If it is really urgent, that is so bad, we have to fix it as quick as we can. But if we think it's safe and we can deliver the job as a longer job, as one in danger. But what, like how we call it, we have to solve, wait and design properly. As you can see on this photo, the actual road itself has gone so bad. That's how, why we need to do some testing it, to make sure we don't just use public funds for a quick fix, which you feel anyway. So we need to do some tests on the on the actual ground to check, is it moving? Is it okay? Is anything more which needs to be done? Then we have to design it, once you've designed it, then you have to do like a proper resurfacing job on that section.
Yeah, because sometimes it might be more than what it seems. So for example, the sinkhole, it might be created because of settlement of the ground. You might have a drainage pipe that they collapsed underground and they have created the settlement. Or sometimes might be because of the weather or bad material used before. I mean, as Alexa said, it depends on a lot of things. For example, on this occasion, if it's, if this is the pothole that needs to be fixed, you can see that it looks like there was a try before to fix it, because you can actually see it here. So sometimes for durability and for the long-term solution, it might be best if you cut the whole width of the lane and do a resurfacing, if it's just a resurfacing issue. Because if you end up doing a join here and the trucks, the the sweat path analysis shows that the the tires of the cars that go on top of the joint all the time. So there's a possibility that this will fail again. So as you said, the the difference between Alexis's team and my team, they have a port with the funding for the year and they have to decide how to allocate the funding. In my scheme, we deal with section two seven eight, the section thirty-eight agreements, which are developer-led schemes, so that the money coming in from the developers, that they have a planning permission that allows them to enter into an agreement with Hertfordshire County Council that will finally allow them to do the works on behalf of the council.
Excellent. We've got another question about how much do you work on site for any one project?
Alexa, do you want to?
Ah, sorry, I didn't hear.
I will go ahead. So the question is, how long do we work on site when we have a scheme?
Oh, yeah. So like this, okay. So for a scheme like this, there's so many ways. The design bit of, the the design bit of a road is easy, that's the easy bit. But what we need to do, when we, what what determines the, how we stay on site? We need to consider the number of people, we need to consider where it is. So obviously, if you are doing a scheme in the city centre of Watford, we can't just close it during the day. So we need to make sure to do it at night. We need to also make sure whenever we do our work, are people gonna come, how people are gonna come in or come out? If there's an ambulance, for instance, or fire engine or fire saves, we need to come through, how they're gonna access. So we need, we take all those factors into consideration. I think for a scheme, normally it took about four or five days. So I think for, at the rule of thumb that we tend to use, our schemes tend to be hundred thousand pounds to do like for a service. And so it's about twenty five thousand pounds per night or per day. So if you've got hundred thousand pounds, it takes you four, four days to do this scheme, roughly. So this is, but it depended on where it is, the number of stakeholders which are involved in how is, how the big job, how the big job is.
I will give an example on this game, for example. The difference to my team and Alexis's team is, as I said, we have developer-led schemes. In this case, the developer is Department for Education. And in my team, we have clerk of works. So clerk of works, a job is only side visits. So our clerk of works on this scheme, it goes out once every week minimum. And me, myself and another project engineer, we go there again at least once a week minimum. And this scheme is running for about one and a half year now. We have some gaps in between, of course, so we might just go have a look if something got, something got damaged. But on these schemes, it's important that you be on site as often as possible. And so you can, you avoid having gaps between communications and especially you might have a complaint from residents. For example, in this case, we had a complaint here about the mini roundabout. So if I haven't been on site, I wouldn't witness the problem myself. So I wouldn't really know what the residents are talking about. So you can understand that there is a bit of a balance. So on a normal day, I might go in, do my phone calls, my emails, design reviews, et cetera. And then by ten o'clock, I might go on this site, which is this specific site, it has twenty, twenty-two locations of works. So on a quick day, it might take me about two and a half, three hours to go through the site and inspect everything. And then I go back to the office, I update the the inspection and the remedial items list. And then I go back to the developer's contractor saying, you know what, I've been on site today. These are the pictures, this is the list of the remedial items. These are the ones that are considered to be safety hazards. And these are the ones that are considered to be lower-risk remedies. And you need to to remediate them and give us approximate, approximate time and date that you're gonna do that. And then they go to network management and they they get the necessary road space for, to do the works.
Thank you, Karas. One last thing, one last question.
It's never a simple straight, that's it.
No, it 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 never is. I've got one last question. So to my understanding, not all the roads in Hertfordshire will be owned by Hertfordshire Council. So some of them are maintained by highways England, aren't they? So what happened, what 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 roads are maintained by you and what main roads will be maintained by central government?
Usually, the M roads and some of the A roads are highways England. Sometimes you have roads, the two boundaries, they blend and it might be a joint venture you have to do works. So usually, any lower, lower level A roads or B roads, residential roads is the council. But to be honest, it is not, usually what it changes and where you see works is the Hertfordshire adopted roads. Because M roads is more disruption. So usually, when they design, they design for many, many, many years ahead. And it's not common to have any houses or any changes that will change your design. But in this case, for example, today you see a greenfield, in two years, there's a school. So this means if the school comes there and new development may appear somewhere close to the school. So it means more new roads and it goes like that.
Excellent. I think that's our last question. Thank you very much to both of presenters, it's been really amazing. I've been to the last, I'm sure everybody has. And yes, thank you very much. We'll be sending you the link to the recording. And also, there's an evaluation going out. And once we get those back and we've done the evaluation, you can have a copy of the evaluation report.
Thank you very much.